Testing.
adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118 and Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, November 23rd. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered a private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Burns?
Ms. Burns is not able to be here, nor Mr. De Prima, tonight.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Well, Mr. De Prima? Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Solakowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists.
Okay, if we can all stand for the pledge, and please remain standing when we're done. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you can just remain standing, please, in memoriam, move the Board acknowledge the death of Michael Shaw, retired mathematics teacher, and Donna Ryan, retired athletic director, and expresses deepest sympathy to their family and friends. Thank you. And Code of Ethics Corner, I believe, Mrs. Kelly, was that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. The Code of Ethics Corner Highlight of the Month, the Board member will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you. Okay, and so now we move on to approval of minutes. I need a motion.
I'll move it.
Ms. Ellis-Foster, thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kelly, thank you. Any discussion of the minutes? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one passed.
Okay, and now we move on to the report of our student representative, Mr. Toronto.
Thank you, Madam President. Last month ended strong with a very well put together homecoming for our seniors. On behalf of the class of 2022, I would like to thank our advisors, Mr. Alsbach and Mrs. Tuckman, our administrators, staff, custodians, security officers, and parent chaperones. The night would not have been possible without all of you. While talking about our amazing staff, I would like to highlight one of our security officers, Scott McCowsky. Mr. McCowsky recently retired from the military as Command Sergeant Major of the 44th Infantry Brigade Combat Team after 37 years of service. Congratulations to the 2021 National Honor Society inductees. Thank you to our advisor, Ms. Mason, and our president, Lily Sosa, for putting together such a special night to recognize the all-around excellence of our students. This induction was the first event held in our auditorium since the pandemic, and it was nice to bring back some normalcy. English, History, Math, and Art Honor Societies are working towards a collective in-person induction ceremony. It is planned to take place during school hours. The fall sports teams ended very strong, and we are now in our winter season. Good luck to all winter athletes. Student Senate has two main events coming up that we're very excited for. On December 1st, Student Senate, in conjunction with Red Cross, will be hosting Bingo Night. There will be monetary prizes, as well as some fun prizes, like filling in for me on the morning announcements. This year, for the holiday season, we are lighting up our hallways with some friendly competition. Students are gathering with a department of their choice and are decorating the designated hallways. This is a great way for students and teachers to work together and spread some holiday cheer. I wish everyone a very nice Thanksgiving and hope you enjoy your extended weekend. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Toronto. And now we move on to recognition, and this is, like I say all the time, this is always the best part of the meeting, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sididino.
Thank you, Madam President. Is it at this time that I'm very proud to honor two members of our student body who are from our Boy Scouts, local Boy Scout troops, and two members of our student body who are from our local Girl Scout troops? They're all being recognized tonight for their achievement in scouting, and what I love about their achievements in scouting is that it always has an effect on the community because of the benevolence of their projects, bringing greater opportunities for all those people in the community to benefit from their Silver Eagle Scout or Gold projects. So tonight, we first going to recognize Matthew Schusler. Matthew, can you please join me? And at the conclusion, we'll have all of the scouts that are here to join their peers for one picture on the side over here. Maybe we'll do it on the stage, it's probably better. Okay. Move the Board of Education to recognize Matthew Schusler, a 12th grade student at Old Bridge High School for completing the requirements to reach the rank of Eagle Scout for his Boy Scout troop. Matthew has completed the Eagle Scout beautification project at St. Mary's Church in South Amboy and has passed his board review. Matthew is now an Eagle Scout and the highest rank in scouting. Thank you, Matthew. Hang on the stage right there. I know it's going to feel awkward for a few moments, but we'll have you all up there in a moment. Right there is great. Okay. Can I have John Velaza? Move the Board to recognize John Velaza, a 12th grade student at Old Bridge High School for completing the requirements to reach the rank of Eagle Scout in his Boy Scout troop. John has completed his Eagle Scout project at Old Bridge Elks Lodge and passed the board review. John is now the Eagle Scout, the highest rank in scouting. Move the Board of Education, oh, sorry, Emily Bannon from the Girl Scouts, please come up. Good to see you again. Move the Board of Education to recognize Emily Bannon, a 9th grade student at Old Bridge High School for completing her Girl Scout Silver Award project. Emily completed a pet pantry in the parking lot of the Ally McDermott Grade 9 Center. Emily's efforts demonstrated her benevolence for the families that may be facing financial struggles and have pets and animals at home. Thank you very much, Emily. Do you want us to actually have a picture of the pantry? Now, sometimes, some of our young scouts like to do the work without drawing attention to themselves, so I'm just going to read my views. So move the Board of Education to recognize Mavey Gillick, a 9th grade student at Old Bridge High School for completing her Girl Scout Silver Award. Mavey built a buddy bench at Voorhees Elementary School. The buddy bench is a place where a student can sit if he or she has no one to play with. When students notice a student on the buddy bench, they come over and they invite that student to join them in a game at recess or activity. So thank you very much, Mavey. I will make sure we deliver this to you, but here is a copy of Mavey with Dr. Ferry, and I guess, I'm assuming it's Mavey's mom, working on the project, so thank you very much. So, Mr. Mizella? Yeah, can you take the picture there? Thank you very much to our scouts, and thank you very much, Mavey. We will get the certificate to you. Speaking of someone who is uncomfortable when receiving recognition, at this point, I would like to have one of our paraprofessionals from the district, please join me at the dais, Nancy Coglin. I've come to know Nancy for a very long time. I remember the first time she came to see me about a project that she wanted to collect goods for the less fortunate, and it's not something she had to do, but it's something she wanted to do because it lives in her heart, being good to other people. And that doesn't just end with her personal life, it also continues on to a professional life. She is known to be someone who's warm of heart and kind to all the students that she serves, and her peers look up to her for her style of education and what she does for everyone in the community. So it is no surprise to me when she was selected locally as the Educational Support Professional here in Old Bridge, and then when she was selected in Middlesex County, still not surprised. But I have to say, not surprised, but I hold you in high admiration even more than I thought possible. There are thousands and thousands of people competing for the honor in which you were selected to be the Educational Support Professional for the entire state of New Jersey, and you did it. It brings a positive light to our community, and I know you do it out of love for what you do. So I'm presenting you with this certificate of recognition. I'm also presenting you with these flowers. You're welcome. And sometimes when you see recognition like this, you want to do something for others, and we're going to do that for you. I'm making a hundred dollar donation in your name to SEPTA. I've already spoken to Diane Michael, and I'm sure that could be used for good things in the future that you can work with.
That is fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam President, that concludes recognition.
And that was a great recognition. Thank you so much, Mr. Sididino, and congratulations to Matt and John. Where are you, over there? Hi, John. I remember you when you were like this big, just so you know. And Emily and Mavey, who couldn't be here, congratulations. You guys are awesome and really represent, you know, what's really great about, you know, our students and all of our children and our great community. And Nancy, I'm not Mrs. Ellis-Foster, so I'm not one to cry, but I actually was, you know, you're just awesome. There are no words. Thank you so much for everything that you do and have always done. Would anyone, oh, so do we have to move? Oh, so I need a motion to move?
I'll move it.
Ms. Kelly, a second?
Dunn will second, Madam President.
Mr. Dunn, any discussion?
Can I? Thank you. So, thank you to our scouts. I know I always talk about this. So today I did wear my mom Eagle Scout, so I know your moms and dads are going to be excited about getting their pin. So Matthew, Matthew and John, sorry, but, you know, congratulations. I know the extreme amount of work. My son is also in 219, so I know it's not an easy, I know the paperwork, I know everything that goes into it, so congratulations. And to Emily and Maeve, Maeve's dad called me that she couldn't make it, so hopefully she's watching on YouTube. Maeve, we're so proud of you, and Emily's so super proud of you. I know we don't see our Girl Scout recognitions quite as much as we see sometimes the Boy Scouts, so I am so proud to see them there. I'm ready now, then, in a couple of years, that we will see both Maeve and Emily up here with their Gold Award for Girl Scouts. So it's just a wonderful thing to see our young students giving back to the community, and it's just wonderful. And so Nancy, I just am so proud of you. Love you, love you. And I'm not crying, you're, oh, come on. But no, you just always give, you know, whether it's a ride in the golf cart when it starts to rain, or, you know, or any of the projects you do in here, so blessed to have you.
Madam President?
Yes, of course.
I just want to recognize these young, fine students here in Old Bridge. You know, I have to say, my son walks in the same circles as the two seniors with Matthew and John being 12th graders. They are in the same circles, and plus they've done a lot of activities to get it throughout the years, from being in the Cub Scouts right through to today. And also Emily, I know your family, I know your brother, and you come from fine fabric, and your accomplishment's excellent, and it's a wonderful feeling to be up here, to see all the youngsters and little ones grow and become adults, and it's great that we have such incredible, fine students here. And I want to thank the parents especially for raising such wonderful and fine children, and it's a reflection on Old Bridge. Nancy, you know, Nancy's been a fixture here for many, many years, and she's always been a staple at meetings and doing the right thing for our students, so congratulations again, Nancy. And all this collectively is an incredible testament to Old Bridge Township. We live in a great town, and everyone that's here is here for a reason, and we look to support and love one another, and this is just one of those great occasions where we can celebrate. So thank you again.
Awesome. Anyone else?
Just a little loud. Okay, not to be redundant, but I want to congratulate our scouts, and I want to congratulate your families. I was involved in scouting when I was a kid, and, you know, my daughters, although they didn't get quite as far, but to see you take on the work that's involved in being a student in middle school and in high school and still continue with the good work of the scouts, the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts is definitely a testament to your character and a testament to your parents. So congratulations. Nancy, I might take a page out of Kelly's book, which I don't do very often, but we've known each other for 100 years, and I am so, so very proud. I can't think of a more deserving person. I'm very, very happy for you. Congratulations. And as Mr. Carroll said, this is the best part of the meeting.
Awesome. Anyone else like to speak before we take a roll call?
Yes, I would like to congratulate Matthew, John, Emily, Mavey, for their accomplishments with these scouts in Old Bridge here. We really appreciate the work that you're doing, and Nancy, congratulations on being the support staff in the state of New Jersey.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I'm just going to add on to what everyone else has been saying. Congratulations to all of those that have been recognized, and it's nice to see two more Eagle Scouts from my troop, so congratulations to those two as well.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
I had the pleasure of, one of my grandsons achieved Eagle Scout this year as well, and I know through him the dedication and the discipline that you've had to show to get through here, so I congratulate all four of you.
Okay, so that's it. Anybody else? Yep, so roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis-Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through five passed.
Awesome. Congratulations, everyone. Okay, now we move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to report how grateful we are as a district for this Board of Education. We recently had the ability to have members of the Board of Education deliver thank you cards with explicit reasons why this Board is thankful to us, for us, signed by all the Board members. It was delivered by Ms. Carroll, Ms. Ellis-Foster, and Ms. Kelly at all of the schools, transportation sites, central administration, and for maintenance today, they delivered that to me today. So I want to be thankful for them and share that thanks for our staff. Our staff is working extra hard during this time of year, and we are grateful for them. That includes everyone from who's working inside the classroom in the schools, our transportation facilities during the trying times that they're going through. Our maintenance, their job only gets harder now as the weather begins to change, and it becomes more treacherous for them, so we appreciate the work that they are doing, our people working and serving our students within our schools with our food and nutrition programs. We are fortunate to have the staff we have, and we're grateful for them and thankful. We're thankful also for our parents and our community partners that has made this difficult beginning to another year very successful thus far, and our students for continuing to do the right thing and demonstrating the growth and all the reasons they make us proud, like of our four students who are here being recognized tonight. So as this time of year, we reach out and thank everyone, and we come together in thanks. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that this Board of Education and this administration is thankful for our educational community. We also have with us tonight Dr. Calendria. She's going to deliver our progress towards goals with our fall data review. So at this time, if Dr. Calendria can go to the dais.
So tonight, we're going to go over some of the information that we were able to gather through our fall data for students academic, and we have some social, emotional, and behavioral information as well. So to go through this presentation, we're going to talk about what some of the predicted outcomes were from current research and past research on the impact that the pandemic would have on students nationwide. And this information's not only helpful to compare our students to other students at the national level and also at the state level, we have some state information as well, but also last year, when we were lacking in the same type of information we would normally have for our students, this was helpful to guide some of the decision-making that we had in making decisions for this year for our students. Then we'll go into what we actually found in Old Bridge, the outcomes for our students K through 8. the outcomes for our students K through eight. The high school, it's a little bit different because it's very content area specific, so we're going to focus on K through eight for this particular presentation. And then we'll talk about what we did as a district to address these needs, past, current, and then also some future plans. This is all a summary, so there's a lot more that has gone into all of this, but just to provide you with a summary of what we can for the purposes for tonight. So we'll look at specifically math, ELA, and then social, emotional, and mental health. So some of the things that we found in the research last year and going into this year, some of the predicted trends that we would see for the students coming out of the pandemic was that there would be a greater impact in the area of math. So some of the research showed that maybe the percentage of learning gains in reading would be about 44%, 66% in math. Another study found that it would be about 67% in, in math, and 87% of the gains in reading when compared to previous years. So to summarize that, you'd see about an impact between 13 to 34% in the area of ELA and about 33 to 56% in math. So math not only being hit harder, but also substantially more. Something else that we looked at when trying to compare our student information to other information, there is national data from the National Assessment of Education Progress that tells us that even pre-pandemic, in terms of the United States, that math in general in terms of proficiency level is a bit lower than what should be expected. So about 34% for students in eighth grade and 41% for students in fourth grade nationwide. Another thing that came out of the research was that there would be a predict, there was a predicted achievement gap that would be greater than normal. So about 15 to 20% in terms of the increase in achievement gap. So something that we know already about our students, when we think about an achievement gap, there is something called the Matthew Effect. That's always been true. It's basically the concept of the rich get rich and the poor get poor. And with education, what we know is that around third grade, about if a student is struggling and doesn't have the appropriate interventions, then their rate of improvement is significantly slower than the rate of improvement for students who do not have struggles with math or reading, and that gap just continues to grow. So what the prediction was, is that gap is not only going to continue, but also increase as a result of the pandemic. In particular, this information was consistent with research that came out of the state of New Jersey and also national research, that the particular students that would be impacted most, most would be students with disabilities, struggling learners, English language learners, low-income students. There was actually one study in particular that found that in a remote or hybrid setting, that students, low-income students would log into their remote instruction only 60% of the time when compared to students from high-income families, about 90% of the time. So that exacerbated the issue. And then another great area of concern that there's a lot of research behind is the mental health concerns of students coming out of the pandemic. So right now, it's estimated to be about 45% of students facing mental health concerns, in particular anxiety, depression. And while we all know this is important, and I see that information coming in on our surveys that we have from the community and parents and teachers, the impact on the learning process is one of our greatest concerns, which is why we want to address this. So when students have heightened anxiety, or they're worried, or they're feeling frustrated, the part of the brain that works to have them learn, like to convert the, you know, the information they're learning in the process to their long-term memory is not activated during that time. So it's really difficult for them to actually engage in the learning process. So that's why it's one area that's of particular importance to us as a school. So just some statistics for, for you. This is also consistent with the formation that came out of the state. So increase in mental health emergencies for adolescents in particular, 12 to 17 with about a 31% increase, and a 24% increase for children ages five to 11. Teenage girls were identified as even a particular group that had an increase by 51% for visits to the emergency room for mental health concerns. Now we're going to go into what we found at the district level. So we examined our data in several different ways. We probably went further into the data analysis than any other district that I know. So we'll talk a little bit about that. The types of assessments that we use here, if you look at pre-pandemic, there's a, we, we did focus mostly on EZCBM for our math and ELA at the elementary level, and middle school is more IXL, and high school is mixed assessments, again, because of that content area specific information. Going into 1920, again, we started with EZCBM at the elementary level. By the end of the school year, it was difficult. We couldn't assess the students in the same way, because with EZCBM, it's important to note for reading, they're all one-to-one fluency measures, which is really, really important for teachers to be able to gauge the different areas of reading for students and their skill development. So then going into last year, we relied solely on IXL for that exact reason. And then this year, we have EZCBM for our reading, math, IXL for elementary, and then middle school IXL, and high school is again mixed, but with more IXL that we use at the high school level to assess student needs. The types of reports that we have and we look at, they're pretty extensive. There's probably hundreds of pages. We're just going to summarize only the, the overall main points for you tonight. But we look at the district level, not only in comparison to national norms, but also what we do is take it a step further and look at our district norms, so we can see exactly where our students are in comparison to the district average under the conditions this year. We look at the particular schools, and then at the teacher level for each individual student. And again, that was from, Dr. Ferry is the one who does these analysis through Sort the Score reports. So we look at our elementary risk levels for math. We look at it in terms of IXL for far below, below, on, on level, and above level. And I'll summarize this further. I know there's a lot of numbers on the screen, but ultimately what we found, what you want to see is about 80% of students on grade level from the core instruction alone statistically. That's what you would like to see. What we see is around third, and third grade is where we start to see the impact the most, and then fourth and fifth grade is greater impact from there. Again, this is something that we did see as a predictive occurrence that was happening in the research. So we did kind of, we did anticipate that we would see some of these numbers in math in particular. In terms of ELA, when we look at EZCBM, the areas that we see the, the risk that is off from what you'd want to see from statistically for that 80% of students with success is our first, first graders and second graders. And we've, we drilled down further for these, and we'll go into that when we talk about what we did to address these needs. When we look at the comparison, so what we also did, we took it further, and we looked at the risk level for students according to the NJ Smart data from the, before the pandemic, and then the information that we have from EZCBM, IXL, and also Start Strong. Start Strong and NJ Smart data is only available for fourth and fifth grade in terms of those types of reports. And we did find that we were right within those ranges with the ELA being between 13 to 30% of an impact, and with the math being between, anywhere between 30 to 50% of an impact. In particular, with our ELA for elementary, those first and second graders, the target areas that we found were the letter sounds, phoneme segmenting, and word reading fluency. And then with math, we're looking at algebra, algebraic thinking, and geometry in terms of the particular areas. And again, this is a very broad summary. We looked at much more detailed information as well. In terms of middle school, with our ELA and math, for the percentages far below, below, on, and above grade level, we did see an impact in all areas, particularly in math in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and the trend for each went up as the grade levels went up. So to look at the data in comparison to pre-pandemic, we, we did have some higher risk levels in terms of math for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. That's something that was actually pretty on point with that national average when I went over those scores earlier about what we see in terms of the, the nation. But also, we, we always kind of looked at that as an area where we wanted to increase math time in the middle school for these reasons, even prior to the pandemic. So that's how that block scheduling conversation even started. And then when we look at the risk levels now with IXL and Start Strong, they're pretty close, almost exact. So we're confident in the measures that we're using. That's confirmed. But we also see that same trend with between 13 to 34% in ELA, or 30% to 50% in math. So some of the areas, when we look at it specifically with ELA, some of the strongest areas that were pretty much on grade level were vocabulary writing strategies, and then weaker areas were reading strategies, grammar and mechanics, math, numbers and operations, algebra and algebraic thinking, and the weakest measurement, geometry, and fraction. So something that we will continue to look at with the Sort the Score reports is that we're going to continue to pull this data for each of the benchmarks. So the benchmarks happen three times a year. The Start Strong assessment won't occur again, but we will have the regular state assessment this year in the spring. And what we'll be able to do with that information, too, is look at not only the, the same data that we were able to pride and cite, but since we'll have comparison data points, we'll be able to look at the rate of improvement and to compare, you know, rate of improvement by each grade level, subject area, school, even down to the teacher level. Other areas of concern that we've identified with our students, and this is more from anecdotal information, surveys, guidance referrals, student motivation is a really high need. We found that, that's an area that is lacking. And if we really think about the information that we're seeing with the academics, it makes a lot of sense. If we think about that Matthew effect, again, around the same grade level, third grade or so, is where if a student's continuing to struggle, we start to see that motivation go down, and by middle school, that disengagement. So we really want to focus on that with our professional development and conversations with teachers this year. And then our school and classroom routines, just kind of getting back into that routine of school. We saw that as a difficulty for a lot of our students. Our teachers express that very often, just trying to get that, you know, back up and running. And then social and peer relationships, students were impacted by not having that constant peer interaction. So something that we, we did even last year, like I said, the conversation started, even just looking at that predictive research of what we could do as a district. So we started to take action even, you know, last year, probably January's, or a lot of the conversations started. And then what we did currently at the school year, there were decisions that right when we got the data, within days and maybe even a week, we made multiple changes in terms of professional development decisions, and we'll go over that today. And then also, what are some of the future plans that we have based on all this information? So some of the past actions, we implemented the CARES program last year for, in the spring, that was K through eight. I think we were one of the only districts that actually did that for all of their schools. So that was something that, for the students that did participate in the program, we got a lot of positive feedback from parents and from the students. And then in the summer, we offered pretty robust ESAR programs. That was K through 12, and they were targeted specifically by grade level based on the needs that we were already seeing. So you could see K through two was isolated, and that was very forced strategy, because we knew that some of those early reading skills would be something we'd want to focus on. We also had the first 20-day plans with all of our department supervisors and through central administration for teachers to help the students transition back into school, into full-time, in-person instruction. And then there's constant collaboration between central administration, supervisors, directors, principals, teachers, child study, everybody in between to look at professional development and the needs and how we plan for those. So some of the big areas that we focused on were universal design for learning, equity and diversity, and grading. In terms of elementary, some of the current initiatives that we have, so once we saw that data, some of the things that we implemented right away for our first-grade teachers, focusing in on some evidence-based programs, Lively Letters was one of them, Project Read Phonics, and our, and then we did some, some professional development and guided reading. Those areas in particular are, are specifically focused on those target areas that we identified in the, the reading gaps that we saw for first grade. In second grade, we had our reading specialists and coaches to actually go in with the second-grade teachers whose students were below grade level, because it wasn't an impact every, at every single school, with certain schools. So they went in and did one-to-one coaching with those teachers on specific areas and provided resources and everything else. Our math coach this year has worked with every new teacher in supporting the implementation of invasions, differentiated instruction, looking at the intervention push-in model and how to maximize on that, and then also some different things to do at faculty meetings with the principals. Their reading and math coaches, they, and they're listed here, they're all amazing. They've done a ton of individual coaching, screening for students, they do model lessons, they provide resources to our teachers constantly, and so does our mental health coach. Again, professional development, small group and individual staff support. And then we looked at our SEL curriculum that was updated this summer. And we do have the attendance coordinators back in the district this year to work with families whose students are identified as chronically absent. Another big initiative that we did this year was the creation of data integration specialists. So they work schoolwide with the, there's a few in each school, about two in each school at the elementary level, and they're working with teachers to look at their data and make database decision-making, and how to work with the students through some of the things that we're seeing. They also created several parent videos. A lot of this was related to understanding the student's data, or just how to log on to some of the systems and get access to that. And then there's a lot of turnkey presentations for our staff. They're continuing throughout the school year in the same capacity, and will provide more parent videos and teacher presentations. Some of the things that we're looking at for the future, we already know that we will be implementing an after-school program again for all the schools. And then we will also have a summer program similar to last year, and then we'll continue with our coaches. In middle school, as I said, with some of the anticipated needs, we did transition to block scheduling. That increased our math time at the middle school level significantly. We're hoping to see a huge impact in that area. For intervention support, we did look at expanding the intervention model at the middle school level, so we have additional support there to take on the capacity that we were anticipating that we would need. We also looked at the tiered process. We did some professional development lately in just setting good target goals for each of the students who are identified as at risk to make sure that that rate of improvement is higher than the average rate of improvement so we can close that achievement gap. We incorporated executive functioning curriculum into all of those sections, which is really key for students in middle school, where we start to see some of those issues with time management, organization, task initiation, and we want to strengthen their abilities in these areas. We also implemented Effective School Solutions at the middle school levels, more of a tier two, tier three model. And then we update our SEL curriculum at the middle school, and we've been providing targeted professional development as we see needs go on. So some of that's happening at faculty meetings and so on and so forth. In terms of current initiatives, we also have the data integration specialists at the middle school. So again, similar parent videos, best practices, looking at data analysis, and putting strategies in for the teachers. Our reading coach is at the middle school as well and working on model lessons. And in particular, with special education and intervention, we're implementing trainings in Project Read, the different strands that would support comprehension. For future plans, the after-school program, summer program would continue, same, similar model to last year, just improvements based on some feedback that we have. We'll continue with Effective School Solutions, and then we want to look at that professional development for that student motivation where identified as a need, and our SEL expansion. At the high school, we also have the data integration specialists. We implemented a new intervention program up there with, it's called the Academic Mentoring Program, similar to the intervention model at the middle school, and also including that executive functioning curriculum. And we'll continue to provide that in the future with the after-school program and summer program as well at the high school. The after-school program at the high school was not in place last year, so we, we're going to expand that to the high school level. Most importantly, our staff. So I'm one of the people who has the pleasure of working in all of the buildings, so I see what's going on on a daily basis. I can't even begin to describe how dedicated the teachers, the counselors, child study, everybody, the administrators are, and they're working constantly to think of ways to improve everything for the students. And we're in good hands. So I believe that with the data that we will have updated, not only for the fall benchmark, but by the spring benchmark, that we're going to see that those gaps close significantly, because I witness to the work that's taking place on a daily basis. Thank you, and thank you to central administration, Mr. Sididino, Dr. Hoker, Dr. Tui. I know they work around the clock to ensure that all of this is possible. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Dr. Calendria. If I may point out, I know it's maybe a little personal, but Dr. Calendria, not only is a new mother, but she is also working on the ESAR grant, which is all time-consuming. So I don't know how she accommodates all this in this very brief report that she put together. Great job? No, that's exactly the information we need, and it's really being useful to help us drive some of the decision-making we're doing in the future. Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to say, the one, one thing that I noticed, an overall theme in your presentation, Dr. Calendria, was the professional development and how much, how needed it is. And, you know, I appreciate all of, all of the efforts that you're putting in to doing the professional development and getting it out there for our staff to enable them to meet the needs of this, of the student population, which is very different now post or during COVID than it has been. So that was one thing that I was happy to hear. Thank you.
One of the things we've looked at in a lot of research that Dr. Calendria pointed us to is, you know, it's something that was coming and becoming an issue prior to COVID, but then COVID definitely accelerated it, is the, the student motivation piece. Students are motivated today differently than they were motivated 10 years ago, 20 years ago. At one point, you know, there's, there's much more intrinsic motivation. Now you're looking at external motivations, and how do we have students look towards an education for themselves and goals for themselves that they find to be beneficial for their future and their learning, their learning success. So you're going to see some very innovative ways to do that in the coming So you're going to see some very innovative ways to do that in the coming months and years. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. And are you done with your poll set?
That does conclude the superintendent's report and the progress towards goals.
Thank you. Okay. Any correspondence, Mr. Mara? Okay, and I know we have some special committee reports. So who would like to go first?
Okay, we had a meeting last month, and it was curriculum and technology overview. Okay, Ms. Karen Heck, supervisor of CTE and nursing, she went over the Perkins State report and the changes in it, articulation agreement with certain private sectors, Jaguar Land Rover articulation agreement, again with them, and that was strictly with the auto shop, I believe. She also went over new courses, proposal for new courses. Ms. Trish Favre, supervisor of technology, she reviewed numerous district initiatives, including district device insurance policy, the purchasing of inactive boards, and the district use of EFC grant money, and how we're going to spend the money. And that's basically what we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solakowski. Does the board have any questions for Mrs. Solakowski on the curriculum report? Okay. Any other committee reports? Mrs. Kelly?
Yeah. Thank you. As Mr. Sodino said, Mrs. DeCaro, Ms. Alice Foster, and I, and Mrs. Burns was going to accompany us, but she wasn't feeling well. As members of the Community Relations and Engagement Committee, and working with Dr. Hoker about the direction of that committee, we, you know, started discussing how the, you know, the staff is working so extremely hard, particularly, I mean, they work hard all the time, but extremely hard this year, and we just wanted to do something to show that we see it, because a lot of times, you know, they only hear the negative, and if they're on Facebook, all they read is the negative. So I'm just going to read you the note that we sent. We stopped in 23, I think we delivered 23 yesterday. Thank you notes, along with just a thank you balloon, it was just a small gesture, and the thank you notes were to be put by the principals in a location where all the teachers could see them. So the notes were addressed to dear teachers and staff of, you know, the individual schools. The new school year is unlike any we have ever experienced, new ways of doing things, helping our students adjust, and dealing with all kinds of challenges every day, but at every step, you are always there. We know that most times, you only get to hear the frustrations and what's not working. It may seem at times your heroic efforts go unnoticed and are unappreciated, but we want you to know that we see the big and little things you do every single day to make a difference in the lives and education of your students. Not only do we see it, but we hear it from many, many parents about the outstanding job you are all doing during these difficult times. We wanted to take a moment to let you know you are truly appreciated. You are what makes Old Bridge special. You are the bridge to our students' success, and we are so lucky to have you as part of the Old Bridge Township Public Schools team. Thank you for your caring persistence and dedication. And then it was signed the Old Bridge Township Board of Education. And last month, I had brought the notes to the board, and each board member signed every note, and we were going to have them delivered in October, but different things got in the way, so we decided together that the week of Thanksgiving was a great time to do it, so we called it our thankful tour. We are having, as I said at the last meeting, we're having our first Community Relations and Engagement Committee meeting on September 1st at 7:00 PM. I had said last week that more information would be coming this week. I know I got at least one email, I think I might have gotten another from somebody who I guess only heard part of what I said, and they started to search for information on the website that wasn't there. But as promised, more information now. It will be at 7 o'clock, and it will be at the Old Bridge High School library. An agenda is not going to be posted ahead of time, because it's more of an informal meeting than the curriculum or the policy committee meetings are, so it's open to the public, and hope you can join us. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly, did you mean December 1st?
Did I say?
You said September 1st.
I did? Okay. Sorry. December 1st. It's not next year. It's next month.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ms. Kelly from the board? Okay. Mr. DiPrimo also had, sent me a report, I'm going to try to read it from my phone, because I didn't print it out. He couldn't be here tonight, so he sent this to me, so I'm going to try to read it. Okay, so Athletic Director Dan Domeno let everyone know, by the way, this is the Athletics and Extracurricular Activities Committee. Athletic Director Dan Domeno let everyone know the naming of the sports complex to Bob DiMarco Stadium was complete and successful. Mr. Domeno went on to give an update on fall sports. Boys soccer were Red Division champs and number one seed in GMC Tournament. Girls soccer made semifinals of GMC Tournament. Cheerleading were game day GMC champs. Football went 6-2 Red Division champs and were undefeated in the Red Division. Boys and girls cross-country placed third at GMC Championship Meet. Girls volleyball made semifinals of GMC Tournament and were the number two seed in the state tournament. And gymnastics placed third in the GMC Championship competition. Winter sports will be starting in November. It was also discussed that the OBHSPTSA should have more responsibility in, hold on, the maintenance of the concession stand. And Arts and Culture Director Anahita Kyler gave an update on elementary music. Students will be introduced to the ukulele as they start to learn music. Music teacher Tony Good will be starting a quote-unquote "school of rock" program at Sharath School. And Ms. Jenks will be working with Play Unified. Ms. Kyler spoke, also spoke about a program to clothe the homeless and distributed a club's activities handbook, listing the many programs available for students to be involved. And that is the athletics extracurricular report per Mr. DiPrimo. Thank you. Is there any other? Mrs. DeCaro?
Oh, I'm sorry. So sorry. Mrs. Alice Foster?
I have a committee report from the Long Range and Strategic Planning Committee that met on October 21st. We had a Zoom meeting because the main, the agenda item was a presentation from Mary Ann Friedman, who is our New Jersey School Board representative, and she was actually at another school facilitating, co-facilitating a strategic plan. So she was actually able to be two places at once, which was helpful for us. And she gave us an overview of two different models that New Jersey School Board uses as partners to facilitate strategic planning. There were, there's over 100 school districts that utilize them. They're a great group to use because they understand the interworkings of a school district, and they, and Mary Ann herself, you know, understands, knows our district, so that's very helpful, and somebody helping. So she gave us both models. We had some people from the public had some really great discussions, and in true Old Bridge fashion, we didn't like either one of them, we wanted something special. We wanted a little mix of both, which is something that we probably, we can get adapted to do it. But the whole intention is, you know, then June, end of June, our five-year plan is up, and we, you know, really want to work on a new one. Now, the recommendation is this process not start until January, when the new board comes on board, so they have, you know, ownership of that process. But a good idea that was presented that kind of melds the two plans, there's one that takes several months, about six months, there's one that takes about three months. But both of them are community-based, that use community input throughout the whole process and in meetings, coming up with what's important for the district to work on, what should be the areas of focus, like we did last time. So it's a great opportunity for the public to come together and work with everyone. So one thought was, once these general topics and these guides of what we should focus on are determined, in partnership with community and the board and the administration, is that we leverage our committee structure as a way to use them and keep those initiatives going, ongoing, so that they're always a discussion item, there's always community input, and that they continue to be a living document, and we continue to work on them. So that was a recommendation of how we can leverage, you know, kind of that hybrid of the plans. Also, some really great ideas, and it's included in the updates to the board, of ways to engage the community using multiple communication mechanisms, and how can we really get the most participation? The nice thing of some of these committees that was recommended by, the structure by the New Jersey School Board, is that a person doesn't have to go to every single meeting. So, you know, everyone has very busy lives, you know, that they can contribute to any part of it. So I think it's going to be, you know, hopefully a great process in the spring, late summer-spring, that builds the next strategic plan for the school boards, for the district. And board members not only received this update, but also the presentation from Mary Ann on the various options. So that is that report.
Thank you very much. Any other reports? I think we're good? Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions on any of the reports? Okay. So we're going to move on right now to the hearing of the residents on agenda items only, so if you have something that you'd like to speak about on the agenda, if you can come up to the podium, state your name, and list the specific agenda item that you're discussing. Anybody? Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lori Abdike. I am a teacher here at Old Bridge High School. I'm also a parent of a senior here at Old Bridge High School. The agenda item I'd like to discuss is the one with the resignation of Janine Arciero. I just want to publicly thank Janine. I was very fortunate, shoot, I'm sorry, I'm going to pull you, I'm going to start crying. Janine was my son's English teacher, is a sophomore, and as a junior, and she was a teacher to countless other students, and she didn't just teach them how to write a persuasive essay. She actually listens to the students, she mentored the students, and I just want to publicly say thank you to her for doing that. She ran the mentoring program here. She is the advisor for the Red Cross, which is the largest organization we have in Old Bridge High School. She gives her heart and soul to everything she does, and I just wanted to say thank you to her. I want to thank her for being my colleague, and mostly for being my friend. I wish her good luck, and I just want to let her know, Janine, remember, once a night, always a night. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abdike. Would anyone else like to speak on any agenda item? Okay. Seeing no one?
Mr. Caro, I have, Mr. Caro?
Yes.
I have three items to read that were sent to the board secretary email.
Good.
My glasses are steaming. First one is from Maria Lo Mano, Lo Magno. Dear Mr. Solakowski and the Board of Education, I would like to bring to your attention, I would like to bring to the attention of the Board of Ed about a curriculum issue on language learning disability or LLD program at Carl Sandberg Middle School. In SY of 2019-20, my sixth grader in LLD was doing below grade level in math in comparison to my third grader was also in the LLD program. My third grader was actively using grade level Envisions math, and my sixth grader was not. During this time, a group of parents and I who have children in Sandberg, and have also been members of the CPAC, or Special Education Parent Advisory Group, formally met with administration about systematic issues with the curriculum as one of the topics. Unfortunately, the pandemic happened, and remote learning was initiated as the entire country was under quarantine. Pursuing this issue with the school and the remote learning settling was futile. This continued the next school year, 2021, where special education started remotely, then hybrid, then to fully in-person, but all classes were still under an early dismissal schedule district-wide. The present school year came, and I was appalled to find out for the entire month of September, my now eighth grader in LLD was doing single-digit addition and subtraction, telling time and counting money, along with a lot of coloring kindergarten-type of pages, while in-person and on a full-day schedule. I spoke to the teacher about it, and told her that since school was back to its regular schedule and in-person, that it was time to step it up. I questioned the teacher as to when the class will learn Envisions math. The teacher instead initiated an IEP meeting to change all my eighth graders' core subjects into a pull-out resource placement. Although my eighth grader is finally using grade-level textbooks, including Envisions math, in the resource setting, the problem in LLD at Sandberg still remains. This is unfair and discriminatory to the students who have remained in the LLD program, and for the future students that will be coming into the following school year at Sandberg. My child in the LLD program in the elementary level has never stopped using Envisions math prior and/or during the occurrence of the pandemic, whether in remote, hybrid, or in-person learning. Why is Sandberg not teaching Envisions math to LLD students in the middle school? Is our district going backwards? The district paid a huge sum of, a huge investment for all students to learn Envisions math. They had invited parents to take workshops so they could help support their children at home. I went to this workshop twice. There should be no excuse for teachers not to go through an Envisions workshop if they will be teaching math in school. Our CPAC has mentioned the issue during their meeting with the specials services recently. However, we need the board, the BOE's, help to seriously look into this issue and make sure that changes will occur for the future LLD students in Sandberg in SY 2022-23 by holding the administration accountable to teach the curriculum to our children. Thank you very much for listening. Sincerely, Maria Lo Mano. The second email that was received today was from, actually, it was received yesterday, is from Michael Mikaton. I have seen a good number of days that the field lights on the baseball field are on, and no one is there. Wisdom Way, Carl Sandberg Middle School. I've asked a few people to do something about it, but it's still happening. Can you fix it? We are wasting money on electricity, plus those bulbs must cost a lot also. Michael Milliken, Old Bridge, New Jersey. The third one is from Gina Orsini. However, it starts off by stating his quote, "Last name pronounced, Lockery. I have four issues I wish to address, and I would also like the board to address and answer accordingly. First, mandatory testing for COVID of unvaccinated teachers. According to the most recent data and the science, we are still all supposed to be following. The vaccinated are spreading COVID as well as perhaps more dangerously, in that the diminished symptoms of the vaccinated could result in them being asymptomatic, thus making them unaware of the danger to the people they pose around them. In essence, the vaccinated teacher who is a veritable Petri dish dispensing the COVID virus to scores of others. Remember, this vaccine only diminishes the effects of COVID to the person who received the vaccine. It does nothing else. Well, one can also argue, weren't we just calling teachers frontline heroes? They are essential. Apparently, that is no longer true to this BOE. By doing what you did to one of your own last week, you have redefined heroes to zeros, disposable and disgusting. You should be fighting tooth and nail for our frontline heroes. Everyone should be supporting medical freedom. Absolutely no one should be infringing on someone's personal." Absolutely no one should be infringing on someone's personal and private medical information. Second, Operation Shoe Drop. This is a proactive measure by parents seeking to make their voices heard. It has a hashtag of #NJ4MF, which stands for New Jersey for Medical Freedom. Each shoe represents the student and/or parent willing to walk away from the public school system if the vaccine is mandated. There are some people in this town who think the governor won't mandate it simply because he said so. I would like to remind those people, he has changed his goalposts throughout the pandemic. And many of us parents are being proactive by letting our voices be heard on the matter. Stand for something or you'll fall for anything. Third, the NJEA's response to the verdict on Kenosha. The BOE and Teachers Union need to address this politically biased statement that fails to recognize due process, right to self-defense, and right to a jury. As long as we are following the science, we should also follow the Constitution. This is basic constitutional literacy. Fact that the NJEA condemned the verdict and suggested that it was racially motivated reeks of the ideology of the CRT, which we have been assured is not being taught in our schools. Political bias does not belong in our children's education. Based on the inflammatory, biased, untruthful rhetoric expressed in the NJEA statement, I call for President Sean Spiller, Vice President Steve Beatty, and Secretary Treasurer Petal Robertson step down from their positions and leave NJEA. Fourth and last, something partially unrelated to everything. What happened to the money from the Read-a-Thon back when the pandemic started from Carpenter School? The money raised was supposed to be, was supposed to fund an outdoor classroom. My child wasn't going to elementary school just yet, but I was donating to many of his friends and Read-a-Thon pages and continued to wonder where my money and many other parents' money went. Our children could have really benefited from having an outdoor classroom last year. Why is everything that could help the children just not getting done or falling by the wayside? Show me that you care. You show everyone that you care by actions and not words. Unquote. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Mayor? Okay. Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Yes, I received quite a few emails on the LLD program at Sandberg, and I would like the administration to look into this, please. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Is there, just to address the field, the lights at Lombardi Field? We do have a, they have to be left on at, is that?
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that question before, and I'll check into that to see if it's a security issue. Which lights are on? I know there are, certain lights are left on 24 hours that are kind of there for safety measures. But I'm not sure, we were talking about the field lights or those safety lights that are on.
Okay. Thank you. And I did, I forwarded you, Mr. Seated, you know, the, just today, an email that I had gotten about this. So we'll, we'll look into that, you will look into that. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. We'll close the hearing of the residents and we will move on to policy. And we're going to present, this is for first reading. Does anybody have any question or discussion about policy? No? Okay. All right. Moving on to curriculum, professional development. We have resolutions one, two, one through three. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie, I'll move.
Thank you, Mrs. Callie. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Carroll. On item number one, we are administratively removing Pet Center, comma, Olbridge.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three, pass.
Okay. Floodits. We have resolutions one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Callie? Any discussion?
Yes. Yes, why are we rescinding this person on resolution one?
What is the question?
No, I said, what's the reason for rescinding the employment of Danielle Pierce? Item E.
They're no longer interested in the position. Any other discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one and two, pass.
Okay. Moving on to finance. We have resolutions one through nine. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. And any discussion on finance?
I don't have a discussion, but just for voting purposes, I'm just going to do an abstain on one of them. So does it have to be removed or do you want me to just say it in the vote? Okay, cool.
Okay.
Mr. Carroll, who was the second? I'm sorry.
Ms. Ellis Foster was the second, I believe. Ms. Callie? Was the first?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay.
Yes, this is going to get brought up later as we go in specifics of where the grant money is going. But I just want to make sure that we're not abusing this grant money that we'll be getting. But I'll get into it in the specific items later. But I'll still approve it for this, this one.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
I'm going to abstain from number five, but yes on everything else.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through nine, pass.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to non-certificated personnel office. We have resolutions one and two. Can I have a motion?
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel office.
As revised.
Items one and two.
Okay. Items one and two, as revised.
As revised.
Okay. And can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Thank you. Any discussions? Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes for one, no for two.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
Okay. Nothing under non-certificated personnel operational, so we move to non-certificated personnel other. And we have resolutions one through 10. Can I have a motion, please?
Giordano motion?
Giordano, thank you. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn? Any discussion? Okay. Roll call.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through 10, pass.
Thank you. Certificated personnel now. We have resolutions one through 16. Can I have a motion, please?
Callie will move.
Ms. Callie, thank you. Can I have a second?
Giordano, a second.
Mr. Giordano, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
If I can, I will echo what Mrs. Abdike said and about Janine Arciero. She is just a wonderful teacher, full of life. My daughter said one of the coolest chaperones at Disney, always there for the kids. So best of luck. And I still have your number, so we'll be in touch. And I just wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes. I also had Mrs. Arciero, 10th grade, English II Honors and 11th grade AP Language and Composition. She was a very good teacher for those two years for me. Also, the advisor to the Red Cross Club, which I was a member of, and the class advisor for the class of 2018, which I was a part of. So I would like to thank her for all she's done personally for me and my class, and good luck on her future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one through six.
Okay. Now, we're moving on to non-certificated personnel transportation. Resolutions one and two. Can I have a motion, please?
Dunn will move non-certificated personnel transportation, items one and two, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Any discussion? Okay. Seeing none? Roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two, pass.
Thank you. Now, we're moving on to, whoops. We have transportation, resolutions one, two, and three. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Weber, thank you. Can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam President?
Yes.
Point three is very disappointing. There's over 125 runs that were not completed by our outsourced vendors. And, you know, I just wanted to reaffirm and echo the fact that our Transportation Division picks up the slack. And it's very important to recognize the hard work of our bus drivers who are employed by the Olbridge Public Schools because they always go way beyond what's required. And this is a testament of what they do with 150 runs that were not filled by our outsourced vendors. So I just wanted to make that known to everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Yes, when we walked in, when we, when Ms. Callie and Ms. Ellis Foster and I were, went into transportation, it took a while to get Ms. Steele's attention because she was very, very busy. So, yes, they definitely go over and above. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for administration on item number one. There's a $197 per diem cost to that transportation route. It goes from Howell to Cooper. So I assume that's a Howell-based student that is coming to the service of Thorfert here, or?
It may be a student who is displaced or a homeless student or a student that was placed by DCPMP with a family member out of town, in which case the home district is responsible still for the transportation to sustain that school, to have continuity of services.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber? Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and...
Okay. Now, we're on to supplies, equipment, and services, resolutions one through seven. Motion, please?
Dunn will move supplies, equipment, and services, one through seven, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Thank you, Ms. Callie. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to separate number four for discussion.
Four. Okay. So let's vote on, any other discussion?
Yes, I want to discuss the Chromebooks for the students.
Which, which item is that?
That is six.
Did you want to separate that for voting or did you just want to discuss it?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll separate for voting, too.
Okay. So let's, any discussion on items one, two, three, seven? One, two, three, or seven? I'm sorry. One, two, three, five, and seven. Any discussion? Okay. So should we take a roll call on those? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
One, two, three, five, and seven, pass.
Okay. So now, we will have a discussion and vote on number four?
Okay. I separated that for discussion. This is my area. I was an auto shop teacher here for a couple of years. And from what I understand, a couple of parents got ahold of me and students. The lift went out in the main auto shop. There's three lifts in there. One is a, what we call a drive-on lift. They use that for balancing, rotation. And you really can't work on it because the driving section is pretty big. So you can't even get your hands in it to do the oil change. The other two lifts went out last year, over a year ago. He reported the lift, I guess, not working last September. Why are we putting this on the agenda now, a year and a half later? Those kids were sitting in there for a year, a year and a half with no work, especially the advanced class. These kids are in there for three hours. What is this teacher supposed to do with these kids? 90%, 95% of all the work is done on the lift. You only put the oil in from the top. All the work's done on the bottom of the car. I would like the administration to come up with something. What's going on? Why is it a year and a half later? Why, a year and three months later? All this is being done now. I mean, if the lights went out in here right now, we would repair that. And yet, these kids were punished and tortured for a year. Something's wrong here.
It's my understanding that there's two parts to this issue, and I will do my best to explain it. First part was that the, there was an attempt to, that was made during last year to repair the lift in coordination with the architect, the earnest, the facilities manager, and the teacher in an attempt to make the lift operational this year with the plan to totally renovate it next year. The supply chain has prevented us from getting the parts throughout this entire process to repair the lift. And what's on the agenda now is the submission to the state for approval to upgrade the entire lift as a capital project for next year, for next summer.
What about the kids that were in there for over a year with nothing to do? We lost them. I mean, it's completely gone. We forget about that? No, you have nothing to do with this.
I'm sorry, I'm just telling, I'm telling you what the situation is with the lift.
I understand.
It was broke. We tried to fix it.
I think somebody at the top screwed up, okay? They didn't follow. I would like to see a paperwork trail. When the paperwork was filed, who filed it? I would like to see everything on us. Thank you.
I would like to add, just from what I was just learned from, that the supervisor had worked it out with the teachers because the other auto lab does have a working lift. So they would just work between the ones that were working while they're waiting for the parts to come in. So it wasn't like there was no lifts working. work between the, the ones that were working while they're wa- waiting for the parts to come in. So it wasn't like there was no lifts working. They worked, um, in conjunctions when the students were learning with the books, they worked in one lab. When the students were doing the hands-on, they worked in the lab that was working with the lifts.
That's unacceptable. Unacceptable, totally unacceptable.
So whenever they had, uh, whenever they needed to use the lifts, they had access to them. Is that correct? They were just switching off?
They had a working lift that was operational while they're working, waiting for parts to come in, but the parts never came in.
Okay.
Just one other thing, the, the, the actual drawer, this, the item that's in number four uh, is for submission to the DOE for approval, and it required that, uh, drawings be done by the architect to submit to the state. Those drawings, in consultation with the auto teacher, were only completed in the last four weeks. So again, this is, the attempt was made to repair it. We could not get the parts, and now we re- we recognize that it needs a big, it needs a major replacement.
Somebody screwed up at the top. One more thing. Thank you.
Okay, um, can we have a vote on number four, please? Roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Abstaining.
Mr. Silikowski?
I have to vote yes, because they have to be repaired, but a year and three months later, this is sad.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution four passes.
Okay, all right, now we have number six, item number six. Um, Mr. Giordano, you had some discussion?
Yeah, last year we gave, uh, students the, um, streams for them to use for the whole year, and from what I'm knowing from the students going there, they had to return them back to the school. So why are we applying for a grant to get more Chromebooks for the students when the other streams were perfectly fine? Why do we have to get an additional, um, set of laptops?
This is, this is federal money that's being awarded to all s- school districts throughout the United States. Uh, it's not grant money. It's money that, it's, it's technically E-rate money, which is money that is generated from a charge on everyone's telephone bill. And this money became available, uh, through federal government notification in June, that this money would be available and funded. And we simply applied for it, and I'm speaking a little bit secondhand here, based on the number of devices that are in the district that are approaching obsolescence, which is approximately six thousand that were purchased four years ago, and based on the, uh, the financial need of the students. So this is really, it's not a grant. It's something that is being provided, uh, if needed, uh, by the E-rate program.
No, but I know, but we, we just gave the students, like, brand-new streams last year.
We didn't, I just, I just, we didn't give every student a brand-new stream. What we do is, we re- we have a refresh rate, so we'll do two or three grade levels at a time. And then the next year, we do two or three grade levels at a time, and the following year, two or three levels at a time. So when you get back to the beginning, the ones that had them five years ago or four years ago, they reached obsolescence. You know, having students use them over and over again for four years, and now we have the opportunity through the EC- ECF funding, which only allows you to use them for this type of devices. And generally, this is a gift, and, uh, and very rarely do we get a gift when we, the, the six thousand that are obsolete, we were required to pay for those with a lease purchase package. This is a gift from the government that, that requires us to buy these, uh, these devices by June thirtieth. And it couldn't be at a better time.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
We discussed all of this, right? Ms. Barrett was here last week, went through the whole thing?
Yes.
I thought so. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Uh, any other discussion on number six? Yeah, one other thing that I thought we talked about, we may not have talked about it last night, but at the commi- uh, curriculum meeting, um, and I believe that Mrs. Barrett said that the streams are getting discontinued also, so I think that's why we're not renewing those. Um, you know, but looking at our future and ongoing state cuts, the ability to fund this without a, you know, an operational budget, I think, is, is a great thing. Um, so that, you know, we, our kids always have the best, uh, tools as, you know, to use, so I, I think it's a great thing.
And I know that's always, you know, I, I hear, you know, sometimes a lot of, you know, from parents that the streams aren't working, this and that, so this is a very good thing to upgrade. Uh, any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
No, I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry, there was an abstain?
Yeah, abstain.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution six passes.
Okay. On to miscellaneous. We have, uh, resolutions one through seven. Uh, I need a motion, please. I'll move it. Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any discussion?
Uh, I just have a question. Is, um, the December twenty-first meeting at seven o'clock in the auditorium? Yes. All right, well, I'll just, uh, kind of let the, the public know and my, the people on the board. I unfortunately, uh, have a family commitment on the twenty-first that I did not realize we were having a meeting at that time, so, um, can, I'm sure we can all understand the importance of being together with family when we haven't for a couple of years. So I unfortunately will miss my first, uh, regular meeting in six years, so, uh, I guess technically this is my last regular meeting, but I will be at the agenda meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. Um, anyone else? Any co- any discussion on miscellaneous? Roll call.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one.
Thank you. Okay, so now we have Board Secretary and Board Business. We have, uh, item number one, and I need a resolution to move item number one.
Dunne will move Board Secretary and Board Business, Madam President, item one.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mr. Weber, thank you. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Carroll. So, uh, normally I read the results once they're official. Um, with the Board of Education, acknowledge the official results of the two thousand twenty-one Board of Election, Board of Education election. Uh, Ms. Lisa Lent, six thousand thirty-eight votes, Leonardo Marchetta, five thousand seven hundred and forty-six votes, and J. D. Slade, five thousand seven hundred and forty-one votes. Uh, congratulations to, uh, the new board members.
Any discussion from the board? Okay, I would just like to, once again, I said it last week, but I'd like to once again say congratulations to our board members. I see two of you tonight, and congratulations and good luck. Um, any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Mr. Silikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one.
Okay, now we move on to Hearing of the Residents on any school district issue. And again, if you can just go to the podium, if you have something you'd like to say on any school district issue, just five-minute limit, and just state your name, please. Okay. Seeing no one? Okay. All right. We are closing the hearing of the residents. And moving on. Old business. Does anyone have any old business?
Yeah, I have a, I have a bunch of stuff. So, um, I would like to apologize for all the students that have had, um, educational and mental damage as a result of the closing of the schools for over a year. And, um, I tried my best to, um, speak out against it during twenty twenty, and, um, we tried to do the best we could under what we were allowed to do as a Board of Education. And, um, to the emails, um, I have, I did stand up for the teacher yesterday that was getting terminated for not getting the testing done. And, um, for the resolution we just voted on, people in their personal lives, just remember that there's no such thing as obsolescence. You know, if you have things that work, please use them, and don't spend money that you don't necessarily have to spend on to, um, have the newest thing if things work fine, but that's what we do here, so I'm gonna abide by that, and that's it. Uh, happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything from old business? Okay, new business. Nothing?
Wait, Ms. DeCaro, I, I don't know if this is old or, or new, and I don't know, you know, who's watching, but it's almost Thanksgiving, and there's still some political signs up. So, thanks.
Thank you, and, uh, okay.
Would this be a good order, Madam President, as well, or?
Moving right on to that, Mr. Dunn.
Great, so I'll start. First, I want to wish everyone a happy, enjoyable Thanksgiving holiday. As we know, uh, Thanksgiving is a family-centered holiday, and we have a lot to be thankful this year, and I think that we all should celebrate, uh, openly and, and, and do what's necessary with our families, because this is a, a great American family holiday, and it's important that we thank, uh, our lucky blessings that we all got through this pandemic safely, most of us, and, uh, it's a, it's a good time of year. Uh, additionally, I want to sincerely congratulate Lisa Lent, Leonardo Marchetta, and Jay Slade, uh, for, uh, being elected to the, uh, new upcoming board in January. Um, I know that, uh, the election cycle, um, was, uh, very difficult for a lot of us up here. Um, but, uh, like I have mentioned before, I wanted people to run for office. I don't think it should be always the same people. And obviously, the, the, the calling worked. We had seven, uh, individuals who ran for president, and we have three new individuals who will be seated up here on the Board of Education. And I want to sincerely thank them for running a, a, a good, uh, race that, uh, specifically addressed a lot of the topics that were concerns with our parents uh, and within our school community, and, uh, I look forward to a lot of good things from these individuals. Uh, with that said, I'll address, uh, myself next month. I will be here, obviously. And again, I want to congratulate them for their, uh, seating on the Old Bridge Board of Education, uh, come twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Would anyone else like to speak for the good of the order?
Ms. DeCaro?
Yes.
Again, I, I'm not even sure this is good of the order, but I, I did, uh, have a couple of people, um, reach out to me, um, regarding, and not tonight, because tonight's comments, although there weren't many, were, were very respectful, but, um, as we're all painfully aware over the past year and a half, um, tempers and emotions were high. Um, and as Ms. Ellis Foster said last week, I would just like to remind the public that the people that sit up here are volunteers, and, um, some of the things that were said, and again, this came from parents that reached out to me, uh, after last week's, um, hearing of the residents, um, I think that was a, actually, it was a teacher from Middletown, um, who compared spitting in a tube and being tested to rape, and that was extremely disrespectful to anybody who has unfortunately been in that situation, or the victim of any type of sexual assault, as well as any family member of any person who has been a victim. Um, but I think we've run the cam- uh, we've been, you know, concentration camps were discussed in the past, and, and now we're comparing to rape, and I just, just wanted to put it out there. There are a lot, a lot of parents who are very upset with the tone. They were upset back then, um, and they were upset last week, so tensions can run really high, and we're here to listen to everybody, and as Ms. Ellis Foster said last week, a lot of the votes that we have to take were required by oath to uphold the law. Um, they might not be popular even among the nine of us, let alone the public, but I would just like to remind everybody, um, going forward, I think, I think between discussing genocide and rape, we've hit rock bottom. So I would like to see the trend turning upward from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
If I recall, the, uh, the woman who made those statements, which I don't think were particularly appropriate, does not live in Old Bridge and does not teach in Old Bridge. So this was not said by an Old Bridge resident to Old Bridge residents.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Weber. I thought I said, I believe she was a teacher in Middletown. Yeah. No, I don't, I don't know. Doesn't matter, doesn't matter regardless. People should speak respectfully, uh, at the podium, because it is very true. Um, we're all human beings. We don't just sit up here, you know, we're not like statues that just sit up here. We are human beings. We are residents. We are members of the community. And we all do care very, very much, and, um, we do have to listen to everything. It is very important that we do. All residents have to have a voice. But, um, I do hope, moving forward, that, um, there is less heat and less, I mean, I understand people are passionate, but, um, we really do have to uphold laws, and the one thing that I, you know, that really it, it's frustrating as, as a board member, because we do have to follow the law. We do have to follow executive orders and, you know, the legislature. And, you know, if people are unhappy with legislation and executive orders, the place to, um, the place to go is Trenton. Um, that's where you need to focus your energies, is Trenton. Call your legislators, call your assemblymen, call the people that actually can affect change. We cannot here. We cannot, and that's a fact. And again, even voting against, you know, it was mentioned tonight, I wasn't going to bring it up, but it was mentioned, even voting against an amendment to a long-term subposition is basically saying that you're gonna pay, you want to pay this, this employee even while they can't work. And that's not fiscally responsible. That's just not fiscally responsible. So as a board, we need to do the right thing. We have to be responsible for money, and we have to be responsible for the education of our students. So personal opinions need to stay out the door. They should not come in here. And that is very true, so that's all I have to say. And let me stop, move forward to a new thankful, it's Thanksgiving weekend, if we're moving into the holiday season. And, uh, I wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving and, uh, a wonderful holiday, holiday season. I already got my Christmas stuff down, so, you know, my sister's cooking, so I don't have to worry, and, um, I wish everyone a wonderful holiday. Um, I didn't ask everyone if they, anybody else had anything to say.
Just a one, uh, bit of, uh, recognition and then a positive note. Linda Costa is a German teacher in the district. She was awarded the Outstanding German Educator Award for K to eight's, uh, education. Um, she was invited by, and we've invited him here, New Jersey Senator Sam Thompson is going to deliver her proclamation. We're going to do so at the December twenty-first meeting.
Thank you.
Can I have one comment?
Mm-hmm.
Bundabah.
I'm sorry. Okay, I thought so. I just wasn't sure how that, okay, whatever. Um, okay, um, Mr. Parton, do we have an executive, um, executive session?
Yes, we do. You need, uh, motion for executive session for discussions of facilities and some attorney-client privilege items.
Okay, so I-
No, I have to say something first, because I, I was called out on a thing I voted on. So, um, I did point out the statute where it says you can't, uh, coerce or unduly influence someone from medical research, which is what these tests are. So I did uphold the law, so I did the right thing, but I know a lot of people don't like to question what they're told, and they don't research the statutes, but I could send the statute to anyone that wants to see it. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry?
You need a motion for that exec-
Thank you. Uh, motion for executive session, please.
I'll move it.
Dunne will second.
Thank you.
Ball in favor? Opposed? Protestions? So we are going to executive session at twenty-one fourteen.
And we will not be back, so thank you all for coming, and, uh, I have to talk to you.
Got nine, oh, nine twenty-nine fourteen? I hope so. It should be, it should be quick.